We do have. Well, let's start. We can start with the opening prayer.
All right, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a beautiful Monday evening. We thank you, God, that we are here without masks. And we see an end in sight, hopefully, to the pandemic. We thank you, God, for all who are here. We thank you for our counselors and our mayor. We pray, God, for tonight, for your presence to be upon them, for your wisdom to lead them and to guide them. We pray, God, that all that happens in this place would be to the furtherance of your plan for this community. We know you have set apart St. George for a special purpose. You have blessed us, and we seek more blessings from your hand. And we pray tonight, God, the business is done for your glory, for our betterment, with your blessing on it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I made that motion that we approved the agenda for August 8.
One in favor? The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council July 12. So I need a motion for the approval of this meeting minutes.
One, eight, okay.
Two, already? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, that's going on too. And the motion for the approval of the minutes of the meeting of July 19, special meeting.
I'll make that motion. One second.
One there?
Right.
Good. Conflict of interest declarations. None. So noted. Delegations. We have a delegation from Eastern Charlotte Inc. Alan Craig, Scott Boyd, and Bill Campbell are here with us. I don't know who's going to lead. Alan, the floor is yours. Well, you have a microphone there, so we can all.
Thank you for inviting us to make a presentation to the council meeting tonight. We have, we have made several presentations to past councils both here and Blacks Harbor. And, and we've even met with some LSDs as well. So that's where we started. And I want to talk about the report. I think every one of you has received this report both electronically and by printed copy. The the report, I assume you have read it, and, and if you have read it, I think what you really want to do is ask questions, instead of me standing up here to spending too much time talking for two reasons. One, I'm not a very good public speaker. And secondly, I think you have things you want to ask us. So if I can, I'm going to take just a couple of quick minutes to talk about where this came from and how it came about. This report was a result of efforts in 2019 to today. But I want to go back further because the genesis of this whole program started with Scott and a couple of other people back when the middle school was brought to Fundy High School, and it created some problems with activities for recreation and so on. That's where it started back in 2014, 2015. What happened was some more of us got involved, and by 2019, we realized that we were a one-trick pony, talking about recreation and culture and only one thing. We actually had got to the point where we had a business plan and we had a proposal for a building. And Alex Trent, Alex Henderson, who's here, he knows we were involved in that at the time. But we realized that it's a much bigger picture, and we also realized that the provincial government at the time, and the present provincial government has stated clearly that there is a need for economic development in, in areas of New Brunswick, especially rural areas. But first of all, it has to be a regional approach, and it has to be sustainable. So of course, we also are fully aware that we have, you know, many reports that says there's a declining population, an aging population in rural areas in Charlotte County. And I think that the master plan from the Regional Service Commission talks about a 20% decline of population by 2030 or 2035. And that's where we came in. We said, we got, we got to, we got to stem that tide. We got to turn it around. We got to bring young families into our area. So that's where this came about. We presented our, our proposal to the provincial government, and I want to make it clear here now, we are not an agenda or an appendix to the provincial government. We are a group of volunteers who recognize the need for what we're doing in the community, that what we have to do is bring people together to work together. We can't work alone as a town or, or the village or, or even individual LSDs. We all recognize that the town of St. George's population is roughly 1,500 people. Village of Blacks is 800 to 900 people. The area, which is what we want to refer to as the catchment area for Fundy High School, is around 9,000. So far more people live outside of the municipalities than live in the municipalities. So whatever we do, we need a critical mass to have any type of economic development. And that's where it came from. So we went to the provincial government. The post-secondary education, training, and labor department was the ones that funded us. They gave us four phases. We did the first two and qualified for phase three, which is what this report is, which outlines our phase four, which is the action plan and 28 recommendations of how we can address the four main categories we have, which is housing, transportation, I shouldn't say we have, four barriers that we feel is stopping us from turning the population decline around. Housing, transportation, inclusion, and entrepreneurship and employment. And we can talk about those, and those are the four committees that worked all past winter on with various people in the community. And I might also add here now, before we go too much further, is that we did an analysis over the last several years of how many people we've talked to in the community. And, and we're close to 1,000 people. It's not like we haven't been out talking and working on this. It's not, what we're here to do is work together, not try to work alone. We feel this is the only way to do it. Anyway, I think that brings you up to date. I mentioned the communities. I would prefer to have questions, and I got the two gentlemen with me here to, to answer. Between the three of us, we will answer all your questions. So I would like to, if, turn it over at the present time to talk about. Well, I can add a couple of other things. We have got our funding for phase four on stream one, which is hiring a project director. The, the job description has been posted today on all the provincial websites for that job, and it closes on August the 20th. So that's the primary point. And, and I also want to point out that of all of our board meetings, we've, we've had the CEO invited the CEO of St. George and the CEO of Blacks Harbor to all of our meetings in the past, and we'll continue to do so. So anyway, if there's any questions, one of us will answer any question you have.
Well, my question was, is how is the funding going? Like, you guys are into phase four, and you just said that, that you are really working hard and getting funding and everything. And I think it's a great project. I was here at the last council when you came and spoke, and I feel it's a great project, and I back you 100%.
Yeah, we appreciate that. The, we've got funding for phase one. We have not got funding for phase two, and as a matter of fact, we need your help to get the funding for phase two. And I want to also make something else clear. Phase one has nothing, has very little to do with any building or what people talk about. It's a hub. It is, it's about addressing the needs and trying to work in our community to stem the reduction in population and the, all the different categories or all the barriers we have to stop it, not allowing us to do that.
Time frame from start to finish, 10 years? We're a few years in now.
Yeah.
And usually a big project like this, as you know, Hampton just announced a big project there. That took some time to go on.
Our, our number one objective is to beat Hampton, not have it 12 years or 15 years.
Takes a long time for a big project.
But, but if you look at stream two, the stream, if you, the building, and I it's easy for everyone to go to that because that's, that's concrete. There's something there to talk about. We are, we're only in phase one, we're in stream one here, but phase two, it's easy to talk about the building, and that's where we can end up. But the reality is we are really, we've been working with this since 2015. Scott has been, some people, we're Bill and I are a little later on, and some of the other board members are just new to the, to it. But if you're asking, is it going to take us 10 years from the time we started? Yes. But from here, we hope it's two to three at max. Hopefully, it's two.
More progress on this end.
Yeah. Yeah. To where we are because, I mean, we've been mentioned in the throne speech. We, we are appointed out by the provincial government because we're doing what they are asking us to do. And you know, one of the easiest things to do when you're a salesperson is to sell what that person is asking you to sell, needs. And that's what we responded to their needs by saying we are ready to work reasonably, we're ready to prove that it can be sustainable, we're ready to work together. That's, and that's, and we can give you a return on your capital because we have to fill the jobs that are going vacant in this area.
I'm, I'm really impressed. I was really impressed with all the work you've done. I just wonder, when does he start work? Chi Chi, the person that you've just advertised for. That's why you say they posted the job, right? They posted.
Posted the job.
So when do they start work?
They, they, the, the job posting closes on August the 20th. I hope like heck we can move fast enough to choose somebody by as early as September the first.
Yeah, that would be great. No, I'm really impressed with all the work that's gone ahead.
And, and I think the difference here is people can talk about it being a consultant's report. My opinion is this is very different from a typical consultant's report. This is actually action plan and a blueprint for our region with 28 recommendations to address the problems. That's a lot different than most consulting reports.
It's a very good plan. I'm impressed.
I have, I have some comments. You mentioned, and I fully agree with that, that the, the genesis of this initiative comes from something that has been widely communicated as a priority for the government, which is population growth, attracting and retaining people. My question is, when it comes to implementing this, should there be a priority that a provincial initiative, which requires resources to be implemented, should be carried by the province and not by our small population basis? Essentially, when it comes to actually building something and operating something, particularly since certain components of it would be very, very well focused to the provincial initiative, the retaining people who will come to work here. Should the province carry the load for this initiative?
Well, first of all, I don't understand your question in the sense that we're not asking any small population like the town of St. George to fund anything. So we have gone to the province, we got our first $70,000 or $80,000 to get to where we are today. And now we have a three-year budget that is being paid by the province.
Okay.
And if we, if we ever get to the point of finally designing and coming up with a building, we're not asking the town of St. George for any money.
Thank you. That's, that's really reassuring. But my, my, my point is, because I have read, I have read your report. My point is that certain aspects of this initiative, when it is implemented, they talk about a welcoming center. They're talking about a large kitchen, which can be very, very interesting to actually accommodating our multicultural visitors.
Yes.
We do have a very, very, very top-of-the-line kitchen here, community kitchen. My question is that if we're going to build things, it's going to be largely focused to a provincial initiative, should we locals expect that the province will carry the, the load of that?
How do I answer it other than I already have? We haven't asked the locals for anything.
Just to go back and reiterate something that Al mentioned is, by the way, my name is Bill Campbell. Sorry. I don't live in the town. I live in the region. But my ancestors actually founded the town, so I guess that allows me to talk. To start with, just to repeat again, again, what Al said, this isn't a provincial initiative. This is, this is not a provincial initiative.
Alan mentioned it. That's why I said Alan mentioned it.
He said it wasn't a provincial initiative.
No, you mentioned about the initiative of the province.
No, no, that's what we have to be very clear on this. And I know that in some media and some social media, there's been discussion about this being a provincial initiative. This is totally volunteers from Eastern Charlotte and the town and Blacks Harbor and other areas who got together, as Al said, a number of years ago, and determined that there was some need. We were at risk of losing more people, not filling the jobs that are here. And because of that risk, we had to look, what is, what will make St. George and the whole region livable? And we came up with a center. At one point, we called it a wellness center at one time because the government was funding wellness centers, and then we shifted to hub because the province is now talking about hubs. But then the provincial government, in approaching the provincial government, yes, they have funded it, but that doesn't mean it's their initiative. They wouldn't, they didn't come to us and say, would you do this? We went to them and said, will you help us? Because it's beyond the capacity of each municipality in the area and the LSDs to take, to get money to do this. They said, if you form a nonprofit society and you, you have a board and you work to this type of program, we will, we will help you do that. So I really did want to emphasize that it's not a provincial initiative. This is an Eastern Charlotte initiative, totally. Citizens initiative, not a provincial government initiative. Yes, it, 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 it has money from the province, but I'm sure the town gets money from the province for some things. But it's your initiative. You went to the province to get things to do, things, or get money to do things, and that's your initiative. Same thing with Eastern Charlotte as a region. So that's, I think, important. And you also mentioned, and I, again, I've seen in social media, this idea of a kitchen for 1,000 people. That is absolutely wrong. There is nothing in our report that talks about a kitchen for 1,000 people. There's nothing in it. But I would like to ensure that the people here who are attending and council understand that that is not in there, but we keep hearing it. And this day and age of social media, it's hard to keep ahead of it. I must admit, it's very hard to keep ahead of it. But those, those two important things in social media. There was another thing in social media too, that the idea of what the town wishes to do with its library, for example, is contrary to supporting the idea of a hub. That's not the case at all. If the town needs to deal with its library and come up with a plan, that's, yes, of course. And the volunteers, I'm sure, would have some great ideas as to what to do. If and when a hub gets built, which we hope it will, it certainly can house some form of modern version of a library or a resource center or whatever is necessary to fulfill the needs of a library. They've changed remarkably over the years. And we have to, to meet that, and I hope the volunteers, I'm sure the volunteers have a lot of suggestions on that. I don't know if there's anything else I wanted to mention.
Go back to what you said. You mentioned it's not kitchen. Is there a welcoming center?
There is. This is, it's an inclusion center. Whoops. It's an inclusion center, which is for all the residents of Eastern Charlotte, is not being conceived for new immigrants. It's not being conceived for migrant laborers. It is being conceived for all the citizens of currently and future in order to provide them opportunities within the community instead of traveling to, for example, St. John. To get included. And that's not just immigrants who come here. That's everyone.
So you identify me that we need to have an inclusion center in your research.
Excuse me?
You identify in your research the need.
For.
But one of the things that we are missing here is inclusion.
An inclusion center, and the reason that it's called an inclusion center, these names change all, all the time in government. I worked in government 35 years. These names change all the time. When we started this, the big idea was a wellness center. Now, it's listed as the things that will not be funded. These things change all the time in terms of what they're called. It's a hub. And, and currently, the provincial government, who would hopefully be a partner in this, is using the word hub, and I think it's actually being used all across Canada now. So the terminology is important when you're asking for money. If, from my experience, and I'm 70 years old now, and I would say years ago, you called it community center. But that doesn't wash in asking for money, and neither does, with all due respect, a library. It doesn't wash with the, the, those people who hold the strings of the money at the federal and provincial government to fund. So you have to call it, in my mind, what the funders, the big funders, and that includes the private sector, by the way, very important, of what they will support. And, but I'd like to also, we always, as Al says, we always go to this idea of the hub, and I know you asked a question about it, but there is a larger economic plan here. It's a larger economic plan that involves the housing, transportation, entrepreneurship, and inclusion, all of those. It's not just building a building.
Can I ask on the critical mass that Alan mentioned?
Yep.
On the critical mass, which is a very important point. Why we don't consider it, because transportation is a very important force of components. Would you have Highway One, you know, essentially a top-of-the-line transportation instrument that has been given to us by previous governments? Why, when you talk about critical mass, why you don't consider Charlotte County as the critical mass?
What, why we aren't looking at all of Charlotte County?
Yes.
Oh, in, in a sense, we are. A lot of our discussions that we have had and support we have had is from the Regional Service Commission, which has all of southwestern the southwest district. We are, are discussing with them how we will proceed. There is, and has been, an acknowledgement that Eastern Charlotte and Western Charlotte are somewhat different. Okay? I know when I first started on this project years ago, there were politicians in St. Stephen who said, we should be approaching this from the whole county perspective. Those same people told me just a week ago, saying, no, the only way we can handle this is by Western Charlotte and Eastern Charlotte, and that is, Alan mentioned, the, this, the catchment area we're looking at is the senior high schools. It's the essence of the county. Has been for years.
I would like to make another point about why we want to talk about Eastern Charlotte. We certainly can do things jointly with Western Charlotte or all of Charlotte County, or the Regional Service Commission's zone, which the Regional Service Commission is doing. But we have to understand is that if, if people have to go from, if you want, where, where they're going to live is where they recreate and where they find home. And if they have to, and a great example of it is, there's businesses in this area today that hire people, and they're in offices in St. Black's Harbor and St. George. They can't find them down here. They hire them at a St. John. But they end up losing them because they can work in St. John, and they don't have to commute back and forth. Our objective has to be, we have to get our teachers, our professionals, all walks of life down to the person that, that scrubs a floor to want to live in the area. Because that's where the tax income comes. That's where you get the critical mass, where you can do things that our community needs. If they don't, if they are all commuting in and going home every night, it doesn't do us much good.
I just want to correct the point that you said, that the Western Charlotte, that CSL, because we just had a meeting with the mayor of St. Stephen, and she was very poised about a Charlotte, a Charlotte integrated view of the world, as opposed to Eastern Charlotte, Central Charlotte, Western Charlotte. More Wells and Wells and Wells, Silo, Silo, Silo.
Sure, there's no problem with that, Yorkshire. No problem with that at all. In fact, he's my nephew, so.
Oh, he is? Okay, okay.
I know, I, I, he's my nephew.
From my point of view, I want to pass the, 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 the most positive thing that I heard so far from your presentation is that you, as a, as a nonprofit organization, do not foresee that this thing is going to become a stone in the neck of the taxpayer of this region. And that is the most important thing that I would like to actually.
No, no, he said the town. He said it's not going to be a stone on the taxpayer of the town. The, the region, the Eastern Charlotte region may have to pay some money for this, but not just the town.
I just want to do realize that we are, particularly with the sprawl of the business outside of the town, which we all know about. And we are very stressed tax-wise, so we are very, very sensitive, even on small things, you know, like even having funding, the cleaning of a library. We are very, very sensitive into things that may be falling on us to actually, not only build, but also service.
I talked to Alan extensively one night on the phone, and he kind of explained to me. And he kind of explained to me, uh, that you would talk about the tax base that, that hub. And I'm, I'm asking if I'm correct in assuming this, that the expense or the tax rate would be divided amongst, we'll say fifteen thousand people. Instead of fifteen hundred people if St. George took the. Front of whatever you're trying to build. That's right. You're, you're talking about a wider base, correct?
That, that's correct. And that's why a regional approach and getting people at the table. Uh, the LSDs, the village of Blackshower who were making a presentation to tomorrow night. That's why it's important. And that's where the Regional Service Commission comes in because it is the, the. Overseer of regional issues such as garbage and emergency services and all, all of those things. It is a regional approach that's necessary.
Yes, that's a lot of.
For taxing reason as well as from a point of view of buy-in.
Yeah, I don't want to say use the word cheaper, but it's a lot cheaper to divide something between a lot of people than a few people.
That's correct.
Yeah. So my question is, what can the town or the council of St. George do to help Eastern Charlotte Inc.?
So I'm Scott Boyd, uh, the ringleader. So within reason, we're just looking for your endorsement and to be working with us from the very start. We've worked with every group that we've come across. Uh, the original initiatives, we worked in the town because that's where the facilities were. And as we realized, there wasn't very much here. And what we had was, was in very poor shape. And as the schools excluded us and currently do, we, we just want to work with whoever's there. To your point that, uh, we have to work together and split the costs and also have the resources. Whether they speed services and kind or whatever that may come down the pipe, but we also have to be on the same page to understand what we're trying to accomplish. And so much of what we've done, I mean, the Regional Service Commission won't let us do this unless we have consensus, not from the town, but from everyone. The provincial government will not fund this unless we have consensus, unless we have sustainability. And one of the things we threw around, and I know the building's easy to see and anchor our thoughts around, one of the concepts we had is this board, twelve or fourteen individuals. They own the facility. If they run a deficit, there's no worry about sustainability, they're legally liable. And my name will be on that. So it, it was not something we want to be a burden. We want something that everyone can enjoy. Yes, there'll be costs associated with it, users. But we're also talking through some of the other people on our board through, to all the, uh, the different corporates, people. And at this point, I think everyone recognizes how desperate they are to find employees. And they're not going to write us a blank check, but they, they're, they're coming to the table and they'll make a big difference. And, and we're looking at building community, not that the town can't. But everything we've discussed is regional in nature. And if we don't approach it recently. Beyond the fact we have to get approval from the RSC and the money from the province, it won't succeed. And that's not what we want to do. We don't want to set something up. So at some point, we're going to say, well, what happened? Why, why didn't we think this through? Right? Who's going to pay for this? And we, we understand in today's world, especially in the last year and a half, people coming this way. And we know how hard it is to attract and retain people. Uh, when we talk to people in industry here. They're not worried about attracting people. That's not their only concern. They're worried about losing all their people. I mean, cooks have moved a lot of their offices to St. John because they can't get people to come here and live. And those are good paying jobs. They can't get the basic, not just the, the laborers, but they can't get the. Pipe fitters and the electricians and the plumbers. We're not training them properly in school. We're not going to diss the, the school, but it's just, it's a really big picture. There's a lot of moving parts. But that's why we have evolved from a recreation as to what we could do to help our community and our kids. To how do we go down the path to get the approval from the RSC when they did their master, regional master, uh, plan? They were one of the last RSCs in the province to do it. Places like Woodstock have had theirs in place for seven years. We've been about three. Alex is new, so that we're not going to blame Alex. Alex has been really, Alex has been really good to us. But we've had to work with all these agencies and find out how we do this. And, and it, they identified that there could be subregions back to the Eastern Charlotte concept. We identified with, that we needed special treatment because the western part had facilities and we don't. And again, we're focusing too much on a building. It's a plan to bring it all together. And then Dylan, through the RSC, conducted a separate report to investigate what our concerns were. And they recognized that we did need these things. And those reports are all available. We, we worked extensively with a Y. Shiloh, Wu Shae gave up her time, three years almost. She was on our board. And we had counselors from the village and, and the town, probably for four years, as these, we've changed our, our morph from one concept to the other. And we sat down with Shiloh and we visited communities as to how they've done it. Again, how long Hampton takes, how long we'll be. Uh, we, we talked to with the architects that worked on the, the new Y on the north side and also the fieldhouse. And how they, how they chased it and figured out where we're going to be. I mean, Tracy's worked with the Y. We've tried to bring, it's, it's, it's never ending. We don't have all the answers. We're not that important. We don't want to be in charge, but their region, everything we're dealing with is regional in nature. And the reality is, if we came to you and asked for a million dollars, would it be fair to ask the citizens of the town to finance something? That everyone else uses and doesn't pay for. And part of our objective too has been the arena. And we've been instrumental in the RSC, looking at ways in which they can find funding in the entire area. To help the arena instead of a village of nine hundred people, primarily seniors. Paying for everyone else to go use the ice, right? So these are, these are all concepts I, I think you all understand. I mean, we're, our hearts are into it. I mean, we're not, we're not looking to, and, and the idea is if we're going to run this and we're going to, the local donations, so the local part of the fundraising will be through. Our own, like corporate and so on, and not from the citizenry. Yeah, feasibility wise, we may have to look at something. But everyone's at the same place and we know how much, how contested that is to get everyone to come to the table. But it's happening. And I think people are slowly recognizing that if we're going to attract or retain people, keep our young people here. Bring people home, that these things have to come to fruition.
I have a question regarding the working groups. So whoever would like to talk about that. Um, so on page five, it's, uh, we talked about the revitalization of Main Street. So. Well, you know what, like the current situation that we're facing here in St. George is that a lot of our businesses are leaving on, on the outskirts. So with this group, how does this, how do they plan on alleviating the current problems that we face as a town?
One of us will try. I used to do some, I used to do some work with the, the St. George BIA years ago. Uh, so I know a little bit about, uh, the, uh, challenges associated with downtowns.
Before I retired?
Yeah.
Too long ago.
Halifax, but.
When they did all the amalgamation of all the entire.
Yeah.
See a big project. It's not, it's not getting two or three small communities to work together. It's half, half a million people, right?
Anyway. Um, yes, I worked in Halifax all my life, but retired back here. But actually, that will be within the framework of what's in this report, that will be up to the working group. And we are looking for people who will be volunteering and coming to these working groups to identify things to do. Ten years ago now, when the BIA had some money, the business improvement area for St. George. Uh, they developed the, the signage program that you see on the, on the highways. I'm not exactly sure what will come out of that working group, but it will be up to the people that take part in it. And the project director, who we're hoping to hire soon, to push that forward.
So we have. Working groups still open for people to join, or is it like?
Well, we haven't even started them yet. They haven't even initiated, well, we, we had them in the past in developing this report, but we anticipate they're going to change. That new people will come in. Uh, there'll be new chairs of these committees. So, and we see in particular, uh, in that one, the, the, hopefully the Chamber of Commerce. Eastern Charlotte Chamber of Commerce would take a role as well as the business improvement area.
I'm not sure he really answered your question, but would you ask us a, a, answer, would, would you ask it again, please?
Yeah, um, I want to know how, um, the working group, because it says here on page five, it says, um. Their action, the high level action plan involves the revitalization of Main Street in our towns must be a focus. And I want you to expand on that in the context of St. George. Like, what would that look like? And how would you help to retain businesses in our town, which are, which is a, a current existing problem that we're facing that they're leaving?
Well, I think it's the same thing as the population. I don't know, that's really up to us to tell you how to do that. But, uh, if we have, uh, as he talked about the working groups together. And working with people in and outside of the town, we might find ways to do that. But, uh, I, I can't really. Stand up here and say, here's how we would do it. Because we have a working group. And on top of that, if the town is trying to retain businesses and people in the town. It's your people, your, your, your responsibility, or it's what actions you take. If we can help you, we're more than willing to help.
But I guess it's like an Eastern Charlotte project, right? So it's not just the responsibility of a town, it'd be the responsibility of everyone.
A fair comment, but we're not going to take over your responsibility, right? And, and, uh. It's a problem. What, what do you do? I, I don't know what the answer is. I suppose you should look at it more carefully. And I'm sure you people are talking about it.
We just got here in a few minutes, if you stay, a recommendation that we are putting to the province. Maybe as an Eastern Charlotte, you can support it. We are, we're actually concerned about.
Is that what you're asking for? Okay, maybe we can.
And that's what I'm saying. You, 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 you are stakeholders in this process. And maybe after hearing our position, maybe you can support. Our concern about a sprawl of businesses to the edge of our town. Losing a big part of our tax base and potentially help us with that.
Yes, certainly, uh, the, uh, the other answer I was going to give to, uh, your question, Alexa, is that. Having, not losing twenty percent of our population and bringing more people in who stay here. Will do a big factor in ensuring businesses can, uh, retain themselves here. Or, and, and add new ones. I think that's the key. St. George has been, and actually I was kind of glad that the, the, uh, the province and other places are using this word hub. Because St. George has naturally been, my, by the way, my profession was a land use planner, just like Alex. So I have a tendency to go in that direction, but it has been the natural hub. Of Eastern Charlotte. The high schools are here, the junior high schools. I mean, it's a natural hub. So it's a natural commercial center too.
You know, I'm one of the businesses that went outside of town and, and there are certain requirements that any business is going to need. So it's not just physical room. Uh, I was there because my grandfather owned the land. So I had a hundred acres and the tax bill was seventy-eight dollars. It was, it was a pretty easy move. Um, but it's also because it's the geographic and population of hub, it's a center of the area. So as, as Al and, and Bill are saying, if we're going to attract everything, housing, uh, you know, population, you're going to see things spring up. And we're not here to take away from anyone. We're here because there's a void there. Regionally, because no one is looking at the area originally. So everyone looks at their little piece. So we looked at the things and almost everything has become regional, whether it's garbage collection or fire services, all these things, economic amount, they're all regional. And, and slowly the Regional Service Commission, that's why they're taking those over. So we want to create a plan, a blueprint. It's, it's in motion. We welcome anyone to help. We're not, again, not going to be charged. If, if in a year's time, we had people get involved, we, we've got stuff to do. Something good, something I'm good to you. No, but, and, and we're not trying to be pretentious. I, 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 I'm framing this wrong. The, the reality is we're all in it together. We all have to support each other. And we, from day one, have, have tried to find a way to bring everyone to the table and bring their ideas. And no one's right or wrong. We just got to keep. We have to support each other. And St. George is the natural hub. And you got to be careful how you say this because everyone else around goes, whoa, no, you guys are, you're not who you say, oh, you're really from St. George. No, no, the reality is. If, if there's housing, it's got to have water and sewer. So that's Blackshower and St. George. If we build a building, it has to have water and sewer. It's got to be Blackshower or St. George. I mean, the Eastern Charlotte Waterways, if you guys know what they're up to, right? They were here, they moved to Blacks and all of a sudden they're looking at housing. They're looking at transportation, right? They've got four electric vehicles. We're not the only group here that recognizes that a lot of these things. You guys can only speak to St. George. And we certainly aren't going to come in and say, you need to do this. And if you, if, if we work together, that's how we're going to succeed. That's really what it comes down to. And as I say, those things we've itemized in that report, they're working groups that are going to be in transition. Ongoing. And the idea is to build a blueprint so everyone can see where they're at. And we're already seeing people come to St. George looking for apartments. Because we've identified people and they're talking to us first. So, so it's not, again, we're not important, we're not the gateway, but we're, we're trying to have the blueprint, promote it, and everyone works together and wins.
I think we probably overstated our welcome, but, uh, I, I just want to add that, that we want to work together. We will have a project director who will be at your disposal to help you with things that you work, wanted to work with. He's, as he or she will be available to work with everybody in Eastern Charlotte. And the Regional Service Commission and, and, and all the businesses. So that's really what we're all about. We're facilitators. We want to, as your, your mayor has talked about tearing down silos, we want to get rid of all the silos in Eastern Charlotte. That's a good start. Maybe then we can get Charlotte County afterwards.
Thank you very much, all of you, for coming. Thank you. I would like to essentially try to squeeze the, the general reports in the bill page in one. In the next session, I can take a ten minute breaks. So, um, I, I will, I will move on to the, um, general reports. And Jason, can you?
Yes, thank you, Your worship. Uh, just with general government, uh, pay for council. Uh, well, six fair, uh, fairville construction will be on site this week to finish up remaining electrical and skating items installation for well six. Uh, there has been some delay on electrical components and panels for this project. So that's the reason why that, that project's taken a little bit longer. Um, canal be, beach rebuild. We're still waiting, uh, some follow-up from, uh, the mayor and I had a meeting with, uh, Dave Stevens with Silk Stevens. We're just waiting to hear back from him. Um, so we should be expecting to hear from him this week. Uh, Coastal Inc., uh, just signing our license of occupation with the province for the trail. Uh, and archaeological, archaeological impact assessment must be completed prior to the awarding of a contract, uh, construction tender. So there's been a pause on that until we understand what the full, uh, impact of that, uh, of assessment would be. So. Uh, according to, uh, with, uh, with the Regional Service Commission Coastal Trail, ready to go with a, a tender. Um, and it could be awarded as soon as we find out more from the province. So, uh, that's, that should be starting this month. Uh, road work, once again, where we will be, um, tackling that spot in front of Dennis Halls on Main Street. That's a very bumpy part of Main Street. Splash pad, the company will be in town on Thursday to complete the final hookup of the splash pad. Um, and, uh, they'll be back as well Monday to do the final, uh, actual hooking it up to the system. So. Even though, uh, we're hearing this from the installate installer, we're still not sure of an actual, uh, you know, official ribbon cutting date of what that would look like. Certainly we'll have probably be active for a couple of days as we test the system. Um, streetlight painting, finally, our contractor, contractor, uh, we looked around at different contractors. Uh, they did receive their shipment a couple of weeks ago for street lining and they're working their way to St. George. That should be completed this week. Um, the community garden, the porta potty was placed at the garden for a month or more. Also, users of the garden have installed some light fencing to keep deer and pesto. And the residential groundhog is also being relocated. The day adventure center for the bleachers with the metalwork completed, the new boards, which were donated by J D Irving, uh, will be installed this week. Also, we're reaching out, uh, to users or tenants of the building this week. All the buildings have been spoken for, uh, by tenants. Fencing at J O Spiny here, uh, up at, uh, by the McAdaver. We have a couple of fences that will be, uh, reinstalled. Um, that's one of the, the playground as well as the ball field. Speed radar trailer will be back in town, um, this week. Um, props for two to three weeks. We moved around the town. Um, as, as well, we, uh, we had a monitoring alarm system malfunction. As many people are aware, over the weekend, we are being, we are reviewing to ensure that, uh. We do have the proper built-in redundancies and a second alarm activation. Uh, basically a, a communication error from the tower to the, uh, central control panel. So we are looking at that. And, uh, we'll be rectifying any type of problems there. As far as residential complaints, we've had a number of residents complain, uh, youth at Day Adventure Center and at the picnic shelter, uh, across from the Day Adventure Center, the Marsh Trail. Um, so we are working with the RCMP on better patrolling and. So we are working with the RCMP on better patrolling and as well, just even myself. Going down there sometimes in the evenings, just asking people that, you know, to avoid loitering for long periods of time and move along if there's nothing else going on. And, you know, we are looking at some different security cameras, upgrades as well throughout the town as well. Just to keep an eye on some damage. We've had some damage done. We had a light pole that was damaged. Early this morning, we had some damage done to the new crosswalk beacon and the upper bridge. Unfortunately, there is some damage that's going around town at this time. Hopefully, just a seasonal thing. That is my report for government, general government.
Questions?
I have one. We're getting all of this damage. And I'm probably going to get shot saying this, but. Where are the police?
Each time that I've contacted them, they've been there within 10 to 15 minutes. They are stepping up patrols, stuff like the Day Adventure Center and areas. So. I do notice there is more tension this time around versus previous incidents that we've had. So. So I feel that there is a little bit more attention that's been given to the town over the last couple of weeks.
So I figured if they were doing more patrols than those that are doing the stuff they shouldn't. Would be less likely to have time to complete their actions.
Yeah. I, at the Day Adventure Center, I went down and there was a building that was unlocked. I locked it. The RCMP came 10 minutes later, that same building was unlocked again. So a matter of 10 minutes. The person that was able to get into that building was busy. So it does happen.
Yeah, I think it's still unlocked. I was down. I think it's unlocked again.
So we have got to go beyond a deadbolt, perhaps.
You have a question? To the item eight. Bills paid and payable in principle to July 31st, 2021, in the amount of $173,682. Any questions? You have, you all have the report. Of these expenses, bills paid.
I have a couple of questions. I noticed that we have a dog patrol service. We paid out $1,500. What is it that they exactly do? So when we go into, when we go into the. Yearly expenses, we have the dog officer, 3,000. They don't seem to line up. So are they different? Are they two different expenses?
500 a month.
So do they capture dogs? Like, is that what they do?
They can capture dogs. They do behavioral visits with different animals, any type of dogs roaming at large within the town. Those complaints will go to them.
So is that the SPCA Charlotte County?
Actually, their office is at a St. John's, so it's the New Brunswick branch. Yeah. And they do regular patrols, too. They were in town actually today.
It's about cement monuments. It's 5,000 was allocated for that. What's that for exactly?
That's an RDC fund that we've received. So we pay, then we make the claim RDC. So that's for the cemetery on Main Street. It's part of a three-year restoration project that we're doing. So we're into year two. So we paid them. Now they're going to be coming down and doing the work. I spoke to them this morning. Hopefully, by the end of this week, this weekend, they'll do the work. They will finish it off next year.
So is that the same 5,000 that was in last month's, in last month's agenda around, or two months ago, where St. Mark's was going to get the grant? Is that the same?
Yeah, we do. We do the payment. We don't pay anything to St. Mark's. We pay directly to cement monuments.
But that's where the money came from?
Turbine gutter repair. That was the total, like, six repairs running around town?
Yes.
Did that include material?
Yes, it was.
And another one, 45959. Auto repair.
959?
Yeah. Page, page three.
Yep. So there was. We had events where there was a car that was damaged. Yeah, we do repair.
No, no, you go ahead. I also had that on the resident car repair, but also, also in the deductible insurance. So we paid the additional 1,000 on the same accident?
No, no, it's something different.
So there's two accidents?
No.
How much every? Bill, there seems to be all kinds of bills for the splash pad. How much have we spent to date on the splash pad?
I don't have that detail, but I can certainly get it for council.
6303. 6303, the one under the visa, it's a cast iron. Flower pot.
What was the company name?
Black River. And that was for two pots.
Yep.
5,800. So we better put them away this winter. Look after them. They're expensive.
25-year lifecycle. As well, that spending was approved unless.
Yeah, I know it was.
I noticed that we spent $700 on Canada Days. I don't think we had Canada Days. Do you recall it?
Yeah, no, we didn't. We funded back. Yeah, that goes back.
That goes back?
Yeah, it was an in and out. We typically will receive money from others. I think it's through the federal government for Canada Day. And so we'll reverse them.
McCall Ball Association?
We do. Yeah, very active.
Any other questions?
On page three, Jason, the walking trail gate repair. Which gate was repaired?
In back of Granite Town Farms, by the Curly Club.
Okay. And it costs 733? Yeah, that's a, that's a lot of money that they charge for that. So what did they fix there? Did they have to rebuild the whole thing, or did they just?
They did some rebuilding, but it certainly wasn't. Wasn't sufficient. Yeah, it's a high amount of money. Needless to say, we won't be asking that contractor.
I noticed that you have, like, different festival nights. And there is no money taken out. So that's all switched around eventually, like, say. If you had a Easter festival while Easter's gone, but there was no money spent, so that's taken and put someplace else where it's needed.
Yeah, it was just, it will stay on that budget line. Whether it need be, of course, that subsection within the budget under festivals.
It's fluid. I mean, it can move from one place to the other. Okay.
Any other questions? In that case, I need a motion. To approve the bills paid and payable. To July 31st. All in favor? And. I think I'm going to get a five-minute break, if everybody agrees. Just before we move to the new business. Just five minutes. Let's realize that when we're doing the general reports, we missed a few reports and. Just for completeness, I'm going to ask Jason to go over BMO report, the fire report. The building and planning. And the water insurance transportation report. So, Jason.
Thank you, Your Worship. As far as the EMO. Just to advise residents that the town status of Level One Active Monitoring was changed October, sorry, August the 2nd. And the CMO level was previously in place since May 17th. So thankfully, we're off of the EMO status for COVID. Hopefully, we don't have to go back into that. Hard to say. But that was perhaps, I think, the longest EMO level that we've been on for over two, you know, almost two years, I guess, in a way. So that's really it with the EMO, and we won't have any other further updates on the EMO unless we have to go back to that monitoring. For fire reports. Chief Morton, Chief Morton being absent. So report to council for fire department. For the month of July, the fire department responded to 11 incidents. Three of the incidents were inside the town. And eight of the incidents were outside of the town. Breakdown, these calls are as followed. One with a vehicle accident, two alarms, three structure fires. Two ambulance assist, one rubbish fire, envy power assist, and a diesel spill. Firefighters continue to work towards certification as fire officer one and fire apparatus, apparatus driver operator. Equipment and air leak in unit 431 was repaired temporarily. Replacement parts will be ordered. Two portable radios have been removed from service. Repair costs are significant for these radios. And replace them fully as recommended, and just in some discussions with Councilor Rubin and Chief Morton. It's going to be probably a lot cheaper to actually buy new radios versus repairing these very compact radios. So. We're going to be working with the chief just to sort of, you know, get some quotes on possible replacements of radios. And that report was submitted by Fire Chief Sean Morton.
Alex, do you want to give a building and planning report?
Your Worship. So. Planning met with the mayor and the CEO to discuss current, the current zoning map and long-term planning matters affecting the municipality. As a result of that meeting, town of St. George administration is applying to council to have the zoning map updated. To rectify several zone non-conformities that were introduced in the recent 2018 consolidation of the zoning map. So we've supplied you a new draft consolidated map, so 2021, along with a planning report. And a map indicating which properties would have their zones changed should this bylaw pass. As well, the Service Commission is continuing to work on the background study towards a new St. George municipal plan. In terms of development, there's been 13 building permits issued so far in the town of St. George. The total value is over 12.9 million. There's been 17 development permits issued to date, and the value's over one, one and a half million. And there's no change in other development types, categories, signs, or subdivisions. Any questions?
I have one for you, Alex, in the map, right here in the green.
Yeah.
You have a line divided. Are they two different PIN numbers, or are they just one PIN number?
Okay, so you're talking about that. I'll go into more detail on this one later in the council agenda. So if there's questions on. That maybe I'll look to the mayor. Would you like me to go into that? Certainly.
Exactly about this map.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions about the other thing that you covered? So what do one and a half million dollars? Permits issued during the last month?
No, sorry, to date. So these are to-date figures. So. Yes, so, yeah. But it's very good numbers overall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other question? Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Water and swimming report?
Thank you, your worship. A water and wastewater reports prepared by Leonard Lee Foreman. Average water daily, daily water consumption for July was fifteen forty cubic meters or total of forty seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-six cubic meters. There was no total call and full colleague colorful or E coli reported. Well, levels are low, especially well number four. A severe leak occurred at forty Brunswick Street after a two one-inch lines were pulled from the main while at the curb stop was being repaired. This resulted in a boil order for a short time. This location had numerous water and sewage lines running in different directions which were unmapped. Work continues at a snail's pace on well six. The sod was laid on the thirty-first of the month and was damaged soon after. Fortunately, some car drove over the new sod. The electrical work is not finished and some of the soffit and trim was not completed as well. The lock needs to be changed to ours as well. The skater system for this well is not done at this point. But we are expecting subcontract to be on site next week. Actually, this week they're coming. A fire hardened on Prince William Street was raised above grade to make it more accessible. Video inspection of the water tower is expected to be done on the thirteenth of August. This will include testing the anodes inside which protects the metal walls. The blower at the lagoons received the annual servicing in July. Lagoon results were good for the month and results were included in the report. And that's the report for water and wastewater.
Any questions?
Was the running over the sod due to vandalism or just somebody didn't know how to drive?
I wish I did.
Yeah, they did a fine job of it, didn't they?
Transportation report.
Transportation report prepared by Leonard Lee Foreman. Work was progressing along on the splash pad with the building nearly complete. Sodding is seventy-five percent done and drainage fifty percent done. Mechanical work should be done at the middle of August. The bleachers of the day adventure center destructive wood welding with new angle iron are currently being painted. New wood for the seats will be installed after nearly all the fire hydrants in town have been painted. Erosion on the ramps to the walkway near the bridge continues to be a problem. Contacted highway gateway with pitchers on a few occasions and have had little help from them. Mowing along the roadside and the trail system is continuing as time allows. Summer staff have been mowing watering flowers and collecting garbage. A rainy July made the mowing part difficult, but we are catching up slowly. The new one-ton, of course, sorry, the new half-ton now has some lights installed as well as a back rack. The two-ton had a backup alarm repaired and the three-ton had an air valve replaced. Tobacco has had frequent problems with stalling, but it fixes under warranty. A headstone reset at the Anglican St. Mark Cemetery had been done with the mini excavator for it was for the, also used for the splash pad project. While line painting should be finally done at the second week of August, a shortage of paint has kept the contractors two months behind. That was the transportation report.
Questions? I have two questions. The first one is why all this splash pad slash tombstones are going on the transportation?
Yeah, because the public works is divided into two, either, either.
Department. Okay. The, my second question is with regards to the gazebo, are we going to actually do any sort of repairs to actually get it safe for use in August?
Yeah, there's for the walkway going up to the gazebo. That will be shored up. There was, there was an area that was dropping.
Foundation.
Yeah, so I mean, the foundation that will be fixed. We will probably during the nights that it's going to be used, we'll have to, you know, ensure that some temporary braces that we put in. They won't be really appealing to the eye, but just to give it a bit of a safety, safety hold. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Around the, around the break in on Brunswick Street, that's been opened up for close to, it's been over a week. When will that be? Like, what is the procedure on, on a break? You open them, you fix it and then you leave it for ten days or is that?
The one in front of the old ranger station?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all, it should be closed in now.
It wasn't closed yesterday.
Yesterday?
Like, it's, it's still, it's like, it's, it's not open, an open room, but it doesn't have any pavement.
Oh, yes, yeah. So you'll have to go back and once we get an ash load of asphalt, we'll repair the, the pavement as well. Yeah.
What's the time, what's the typical timeline?
We don't usually want to get a, just a shipment of pavement just for one section like that. So we try to do them all at the same time. Sometimes that does vary. It can be a couple of weeks depending on if there's other patchwork to be done. Yeah.
That's what it settles to.
I suppose.
Yeah, let it settle a little bit, yeah.
The bank includes the section of general reports together with one of the, so we can move on to new businesses. And I'm going to go ask for Alex to come back. Very, I just before, just to give the context, they Alex, we plan to actually have a, to ask for a motion on resolution to the council for first reading of bylaw twenty-five B twenty-one zero-two. Do you want to actually introduce the subject before we put the motion or ask for a motion or?
It's up to you, your worship, and I am prepared to do either ways. If you'd like to put it on the floor and then, and then I can talk after.
Yeah.
I'm sure that Alex can give sort of a preamble just on the background.
Yeah.
Let's send this by law.
Yeah, quick, I could just cover this quickly. So, like I said, we, we covered the zoning map in a discussion of the CEO and mayor. And there, out of that came a application from the town administration to look at updating and correcting some zones on the zoning map as it stands now. So I just want to give some of the background as to how we got here and, and why we're looking at doing this, this update and correction. So council adopted the current zoning bylaw, or sorry, the previous zoning bylaw twenty-five A in two thousand and eleven. This is more or less the current zoning bylaw in its full form. But with the news, sorry, the new community planning act enacted by the province in twenty eighteen, there was a, pardon me, there was a clause in there that forced municipalities to update, repeal and replace their entire bylaw if they wanted to make one change to it. They wanted to get every municipality in the province to come in compliance with the new community planning act. So when the vet clinic and dog park and animal shelter, Melanie even applied for a rezoning of her property to, to do that development. Council at the time had to do a consolidation of its map. All the previous changes from previous council administration had to be brought forward today to the day at the time to be reflected in, on the, on the bylaw and on the map. And in order to consider another change to it, right, bringing it in conformity with the act at the time. It was required and it had to be done quickly to, to facilitate the development. So we started working with the town only in twenty eighteen, mid, mid twenty eighteen. And so we didn't have a long history with the town at that time. So we didn't have a catalog of past rezonings or, or access to all the past rezonings that had been made. But we did have access to was a GIS file from the consultant who maintained the map for the town. And we use that as the basis to understand what changes have been made in previous eight or so years. Unfortunately, this GIS map contained errors. So a total of sixteen properties, PIDs, which are marked into nine different groups on the zoning map, had their zones changed to zones that they shouldn't have been changed to. So the direction that council gave us to eighteen with the consolidated map, as I said, it wasn't about changing anybody's property other than ten Brunswick Street and those properties which had been previously rezoned in the past eight years. So we wanted to bring together all those past changes and add on to ten Brunswick Street change. So we now know that some of these changes occurred weren't, were, were inadvertent. They were due to errors in the GIS file. And so we're now directed to, we were directed to find, identify, identify all the properties that result to the error and look to rectify them, bring compliance with the municipal plan. So we've supplied a new map with, oh, there's two maps we supplied. One that's marked the town of St. George zoning map corrections. So this one marks the, the nine site areas. And then we have the new consolidated zoning map with, so this should be the zoning bylaw schedule A one. So we replace the current schedule attached to your current zoning bylaw, just schedule A. And this makes all the changes that are identified here. I can go into detail which properties they are, but what I'm going to recommend is that council hold a public hearing and notify the property owners that would be affected by the change. Also, in setting a date for a public hearing, if you were to consider doing this bylaw change, you should be looking to get the views of the practice as required by the law. And, and once you have your public hearing and all those people are notified, then you can proceed to a second and third reading. You could do a first reading of this pilot tonight as is. And there could be, I think we just before I concluded my just general update, there was a note about a parcel line that might not be correct. So there could be things we could look at here between now and third reading. So if there's anything that gets, is noted. I will also note that we are, as we, as I said before in previous council reports, we are looking towards a, a general municipal plan comprehensive review. So this would have been something we have done in that process, but there was some urgency needed put on, put on the planning division from the administration to get this, get this corrected as soon as possible. So that's what we have here today. So, thank you.
Can I ask one question, Alex? The PrAC process for this bylaw, can you give us a bit of an insight about the, the scheduling of this? Like, you know, it's supposed that we go through the, the first and the second reading today. And then we have to come to, to PrAC and ask them for their views and recommendations about what we are about to vote for a third reading. How long this thing process takes? So we can schedule.
So if what we normally do, we have a standing item on the PrAC's agenda for views on bylaws and municipalities or views and regulations the minister is considering. So if you have a bylaw that you're thinking about and you need to request the views of the, the, the planning committee, because they give a technical advice to you as council. You can choose to take it or not, and that's up to you. But they will just, they will, they will accommodate you as, as, as efficiently as possible. So we've been able to get items on their agenda that, that council's just heard at the beginning of the week and they're looking at it at the end of the week. If, if it works, because there's a lot of legislative juggling that has to happen with your passing bylaws. So what will happen is we, in, in due course, these bylaws get sent to the PrAC for review before the meeting. They'll read it, consider it, and the chair generally will be just going around the table and just asking everybody for their independent views. And then the, the chair does is writes a summary of those, those views. So oftentimes there will be something that's raised as something to consider, something that may have come up that they thought could be changed, something that they are seeing that could be an improvement, et cetera. Sometimes it's generally just okay. And so they'll say, go ahead. Other times they may have concerns and provide reservations to council on its adoption. So you can get a bunch of different views through that process.
Okay, I, I will, I will, I will ask for a motion to have a resolution of the council for the first reading by title only of bylaw twenty-five B twenty-one zero-two, amending the zoning by law for the town of St. George by repealing the zoning map for the municipality schedule A and replacing with zoning map schedule A one. Can I have a motion?
I make that motion that we do the first reading for bylaw twenty-five dash B dash twenty-one dash O two, the amendments.
Will you favor? And we move to the item B. And I'm going to ask for a motion for the resolution of council to second reading in its entirety of bylaw twenty-five B twenty-one zero-two, amending the zoning by law for the town of St. George by repealing the zoning map for the municipality schedule A and replacing with zoning map schedule A one. And that's in entirety. So who's going to do the reading? Please, please.
This is by law number twenty-five dash B dash twenty-one dash zero-two, a by law to amend by law number twenty-five dash B being the zoning by law for the town of St. George. The council of the town of St. George under the authority vested in the Community Planning Act, RSNB twenty seventeen, an amendment there to hereby makes the following bylaw. The bylaw number twenty-five dash B, the zoning by law for the town of St. George is hereby amended by repealing of the zoning map for the municipality attached to the said bylaw as schedule A and replacing it with the zoning map shown on schedule A dash one attached here too and forming part here of.
I'll make that motion that we do the second reading for bylaw twenty-five B dash twenty-one O two.
Will you favor?
Your worship, and at this time, you, you certainly can have a motion from council if they wish to seek the, the review of the PrAC.
Yeah, I, I, I want to have a motion from the council to request the PrAC to actually give its views on the proposed bylaw for the zoning change that Jason just read. So can I have a? Thank you. Will you favor?
Is this where I can ask that question about PID? Can I ask that, gee, Alex now?
Your worship pleases.
It's a question, yes, by all means, we put forward the just.
So on that green, on the town of St. George zoning corrections, you have a line going down through, is that just one P I, PID number for that one or is it two different P I D numbers?
So this, this is actually raised to me by my seatmate over there, Raymond Hall. So it could be that this parcel line is showing something like a it could be a difference of tax code. We got it. I have to double check that. So
let me know.
As you can see, these can be complicated. So
that's why I'm asking, because, yeah, because then you see down on the next line, you see another line going through
right.
The third one, but then the fourth one, there's nothing or nothing after that.
Yeah.
So my question, you know, is, are they just all separate or are they each one registered? Like, maybe one might be like a farming, this one might be a house. Is that maybe what it could be?
Well, what we were trying to do and just, we're trying to display the most up-to-date parcel mapping that we got from Service to Brunswick. So we'd have, we'd have used a fresh download. But for one of those parcel lines, there, again, it could be a mistake on there. So that's something we need to double check. So I will note that and I, before PrAC sees it, I'm going to, I'm going to look at that to see if that is something that, that needs to be fixed as well. So.
I like to have a motion for a resolution by council to hold the public hearing regarding bylaw twenty-five B twenty-one zero-two, amending the zoning by law for the town of St. George by repealing the zoning map for the municipality schedule A and replacing the zoning map schedule A one. So it is a, and the motion for the, to hold a public hearing. One?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Will you favor? The date, we can set up now?
Yeah, we can look at, I think it was August the thirty-first at six thirty.
So, but it's a Tuesday.
By, by, by agreement, we have August thirty-first. Vote it? Vote it? Yeah.
So usually that's what happens, they'll send a letter out to all the people that are involved.
The next item of the agenda is. The issue of the proposal, I'll go on the reform and the input for the municipality. And I want a motion to approve the letter that. The C E O has prepared to be forward to the town, to the, to the, I'm sorry, to the, to the minister. On your favor? There is a motion for a proposed fundraising. Does anyone wants to actually raise this motion to can discuss the motion, the proposed fundraising for a scholarship to be awarded? To raise the student in recognition of their volunteer efforts in St. George. So can I have a motion to actually? Discuss that. Yeah, there are questions, 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 questions. There is, there is a, there is a proposal. Normally, do you want to actually bring it forward, Jason? I think you are, you are aware of it.
From from what I understand, this is a proposal for a fundraising. Initiative that would be funds received from this either mostly through some with that will be done at events. And this can be done online, online fundraising activity. And the proceeds would be used as a scholarship to water for residential. Resident students, so students within the town of St. George and and part of that scholarship. Through the application would have to be, you know, you'd have to, you'd have to have volunteering efforts in the town as well. So to to promote volunteerism with the with students here within the town.
If I can add one thing to what Jason said, I I believe that. It was, it was an initiative that I thought that would be important for this town to actually try to get as many. Volunteers from our funny high school to get engaged with. Community needs that we have identified. Whether this is helping community living with the. Some initiative with a. Community garden or or helping. Some seniors events which are happening and they they we need some extra hands. The point, the point is that. We should, we should be able to actually go to the funding high school principal and said, as a town, we have that initiative of getting. More of the students out to volunteer. In areas of town activities where we need volunteers. And. We are prepared to recognize. The students who step forward. To come to these events by actually at the end of the year, and we're talking now about now. May two thousand and twenty two. Having a committee who's gonna be probably. From the school, from the council, from from the community. That would be selecting out of these three or four or five volunteers who will step forward, one or two, that will be actually giving them a scholarship. In recognition of their contribution. To the community through their volunteering effort. So that is, that is the motion which has been put forward. And. Can I have someone to actually raise the motion? Second it? Let me ask, let me ask before, are there any questions?
Would it be a grade twelve student?
Yes.
Furthering their education?
Correct.
Not only of St. George, but of area? Only resident?
Fundy High School.
Okay, so area.
Fundy High School, yeah, that was the fundy high school, yes. So it is Eastern Charlotte.
And the high school service more than just St. George.
It's a fundy high school for service to St. George community needs.
Just in St. George?
Yes, St. George. The fundy high school, which belongs in our community in our town. Supporting activities that. Community activities that we we have in St. George. And I mentioned three or four of them. Community gardens, community living, seniors events, seniors events, there are several seniors event where we need people to actually come and. Other move chairs around or do something, you know.
I think we need something a little more structured in terms of what is the criteria? What, you know, your ideas is a good idea. I I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that. We need to see it. I need to see it in front of me, what the criteria is, what the age group is, what the scholarship is for in. In terms of their level of volunteering, how many hours, we need to know. Where the money is going to come from, you know, are we just going to pull it out of the air and, you know, here's a thousand dollars? Like, we need to know. Some facts in front of us on paper so we can decide if this is something we want to support. I know previous, sorry, go ahead, Lex.
If I understood correctly, we would form a committee and they would set the criteria. So and then the money would, if I understood correctly, would be coming from representatives from the community, like people that attend our events.
The proposal has been put to actually start an electronic fundraising. That's gonna be in conjunction to the advertising of the events. So if somebody wants to come and listen to the string quartet. We're gonna invite them to actually make a donation. Which is gonna be going to the town electronic account. So at the end of these two events that we're gonna have, we may end up with a pool of five hundred thousand dollars and then. Who can actually go and ask for more money if we need to actually make a scholarship. The point that I was trying to bring, and I think that everybody in the council has received. An explanation is that the initiative is to actually take advantage of two major events. Musical events that are happening that potentially can attract people from outside of the town. I expect the string quartet may actually get people from St. John or from St. Andrews to come and 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 listen to it. So if these people see this and say that St. George is also having initiative to actually. Attract, reward volunteers in the community, they may actually make a donation by actually clicking the button. And sending five dollars or ten dollars to that event. So it is, I think I was very clear to the communication that I had sent to everybody around the table about what I'm proposing. I have, I'm not prepared to actually say now if. How many people are gonna be in the selection committee, how they're gonna. How they're going to select who is the best volunteer? I mean, at some point, there is some discretion that people, whether it's the principal or Jason or the mayor or the council collectively ought to have in making that decision. If we want to actually. Go down and write with font point number six. Find detail that that person ought to be between that height and that height, I think we are missing the point. So my my proposal, as 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 put forward by the motion, is to allow the town. That is facing two events that are coming out in the next three weeks to attempt. To raise some money that there would be exclusively tagged. For us to go to the funny high school in. A month from now, meet the principal and said, we want to actually. Ask the fundy school students to engage in the areas where we need volunteers. And we are prepared to actually mark a special scholarship for the best one or two, whatever we decide. Of the students who will contribute to our community by volunteering their time. I don't think it's a very, very complicated proposal.
I don't, I'm not saying it's not a good idea for volunteerism, but the grade twelve students at Sunday High. Do put their names out if they want to volunteer. Previous years. Some of the students have volunteered, helped us with the Easter, helped us with the kids' activities. And what we did is the teacher at that time would get the student to come to whichever council member. That was in charge of looking after that activity. Write a letter to the school saying that this student gave so many hours of volunteer to the school. That's how we've always done it. We give a, already give a bursary to the school each year. So myself personally, to set up a GoFundMe page, no, I'm not in favor of that, no. That's my viewpoint.
Okay, any other question? You have moved for the motion, right, Alexa? Any other, can can be seconded? So just for the record, I want to actually. Be noted that the council has not seconded a motion to start a volunteering campaign. Actually, a campaign to fund the best volunteer who will actually contribute. To the community services in this town. And that. Spoils that item in the agenda. Public presentations? We don't have anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes.
I just wanted to start by thanking the interest from many town councillors in just the community garden and. Jason for taking many of my calls. And just being very supportive. Really appreciate you bringing a porta potty up there, this like right away. And supporting putting up a fence around, although I don't know if the neighbors appreciated. Me post pounding twenty posts and at nine in the morning. I just wanted to, you had made a comment earlier about. The community living center being in charge of the garden, but. They are not in fact in charge of the community garden. The community garden is in the hands of the town. So. Yeah, I have put together a bit of a proposal. I didn't. Get it on time to hand out copies ahead of time, but I do have a few copies. I'm not sure how I, what I do with that or.
If you want to send them to the town, we can distribute it as well to council too. Yep.
Yeah, so it's just, I've been, I've been up there for about two months, just doing some work. And this is just me, it's not an official. Proposal, it's just me writing down some thoughts, some ideas. Because to me, a community garden is less about gardening and more about community. So. That requires buy in and involvement from the community and it needs leadership, that needs leadership and recruitment. And so I see if the town is the one, the ones, the town is in charge of the community garden, then I would see that as their job. And if not, somebody has to take that leadership. So I just have written down some things to consider. Why was the space created? What's it, what is its purpose? Is it to increase, increase local food security, create community space, educate? And then who is your target group? So I've put down some ideas here. Is it the youth group? I've been taking kids up from the Y M C A up there and I've been teaching them about pollinators and we've been harvesting and. It's been really wonderful and it's, it it just points to the great opportunity that's there. I have a little note at the bottom that making an intergenerational space would be really awesome. From child to elderly, I just see that as incredibly valuable and I'm sure that. With not knowing this community very well, there are some seniors in this community that love to garden and pairing them with kids that. Are really excited about learning how to garden. Would be, is just a great opportunity. Who's in charge of maintaining the space and? How does that create ownership and accountability? So is it the town or is it passed off to community members? Is a board created? And then where does the money from the beds go? Is it put back into the garden? And just a thought about cost, is it high? When I look at costs of just gardens in the region in Blacks, in Black. Black Parker and in St. Stephen and St. Andrews, just sort of comparing. What about low income families if they want a bed, but they can't afford it? So just, yeah, again, some thoughts. But I'm really nervous because I don't do this a lot. And then just how community members can be attracted to the space. How can a sense of community be created? I took the liberty of putting a bulletin board up and put a little note on there trying to. Drum up some interest. And yeah, then I just have a list of. Eight suggestions. I'm not going to go through all of them. It's just. Yeah, just it should be run by people who have their heart in it. And that's no, I'm not trying to step on any toes. But perhaps a board could be created or. Someone approached that's interested in gardening. I I if I were here all the time, I would volunteer to do that, but I'm only working here for another two months and then I'm here part time. So. I love the space. I really, really enjoyed being up there. I was thinking about efforts that may should be made into beautifying the space. There are the beds, but then it would be wonderful to see flowers around. If there's already a, you know, program to put flowers around town, it would be lovely to have that at the community garden as well. Yeah. Just creating space for children, having ample signage in terms of. What the garden is for and whether or not the produce is free to take or. Holding events there, I see that as a venue. If there, if there are things happening in town, that could be a space also used for concerts, for family concerts. And if that's the case, then perhaps there needs to be more seating up there. And yes, there's a porta potty up there, but it would be, it might be nice if there was something maybe a little bit more permanent where you could actually wash your hands or. And then the fence, again, it's temporary. People don't really love to plant a garden if there's a chance that like if they're gonna just get eaten and that's what was happening. The deer were walking in and just eating everything. So. Again, if it was in the hands of of people that were driving it, there are grants available for things like that. The community garden, St. Stephen got a ten thousand dollar grant to build their fence around their garden. So. Yeah. I guess that's.
I've never met before. Can you identify yourself?
Oh, sorry, Amanda DeBruschi. I'm working at the food bank for the summer gardening.
Okay, I just, I just want to, I just want to actually. We're not supposed to actually engage in any debate. I just want just for one information that you put forward is important to clarify it. The C E O and myself had a meeting with the board of the community living. And we felt that would have been a positive development if next year. We had the many people who the community living supports, people with handicap, to actually participate. In a project that will actually help grow food in that community garden and pass it on to the food bank. So the food bank can either use it directly to their, to their, to their clients. Or potentially sell it at the small farmer market that we may set up at the adventure center. So I'm not sure if somebody has briefed you about what Jason, myself and the board of the community had discussed. But that was an area which I have hoped that that would have heard more from the the food bank. And something that I would have liked to see volunteers from the funny high school come and help these people who have handicaps or disabilities. Engaged in in production. So it's a challenge and we'd like to follow that.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Hello, Tracy Craig. I just have a quick update from the Y M C A of Eastern Charlotte County Advisory Committee. I had hoped to have something to send to you electronically before tonight, but didn't quite get it done in time. I just wanted to let you know the Y has donated volleyball nets for the beach volleyball. Uh, just wanted to let you know, um, the Y has donated volleyball nets for the beach volleyball nets for the courts at canal. And we've, um, I did mention this to Jason, uh, a month or so ago. I do have them in my yard, um, right now. And so this week I will be going out to kind of see what's needed and I'll, um, let Jason know, uh, about or how we can coordinate putting those up. And, uh, we're really excited to announce as part of Summer Fest, we will be sending out, um, uh, we will be having a beach volleyball tournament on Saturday. There will be, um, an adult tournament and then on Sunday, and I know technically Summer Fest is the twentieth Friday and Saturday. Uh, we couldn't coordinate volunteers enough for Friday, but we will do Saturday and Sunday. And, um, as soon as I have that information available, I will make sure that it gets sent out to you guys for, um, the Summer Fest, uh, website and such like that, just, and we'll be announcing it, of course, through the YMCA. Um, of Eastern Charlotte Facebook page and social media, but, uh, we're excited to have that and funds, so there will be a cost per teams to register. Um, but funds will stay, um, in St. George and Eastern Charlotte to support future programming, um, of Y initiatives. So just wanted to give you a little update about beach volleyball courts that are coming to canal.
Thank you.
Can you clarify what you said for Sunday? What, what was the event that's planned for Sunday?
No, so on, on Summer Fest weekend, the Saturday would be an adult tournament and for adult teams and the Sunday would be a youth, for youth teams, so twelve to seventeen, so eighteen plus on Saturday and twelve to seventeen on Sunday. I said, well, um, I'll make sure that all that information gets shared once we have it, but just wanted to get that little update tonight.
Any other person who likes to speak? Well, I want to thank the residents for being, uh, so diligent in alerting us. Otherwise, we may have taken another day and by that time, you know, we would have, we would have run, yeah, it was, it was actually a community response. The town has worked very well with that, but the residents are the first who stepped into the, the crisis. So thank you, energy, and you're the turning for starting. And, um, we're now moving to statements by members of council.
I would just like to say that we've had, um, three music nights. I've had around about seventy-three to eighty people every music. Um, it's been well attended and we've had, um, John Williamson here one night cooking the hot dogs. Andrea Mason, our MLA was here last week cooking the hot dogs. And it's been a really good turnout. I've been asked to maybe try to do something in the fall with maybe a Sunday afternoon jam or something. So I'm gonna bring that to council and we'll talk more, but I just wanted to thank everybody for attending and hope to see you this Thursday night for our last summer concert here at the Maca David Center.
Sam?
I'd like to thank all people that donated material and time to our flatbed building. It's greatly appreciated by the town. I'm certain residents appreciate it and the people that are going to use it inside and outside of town are going to enjoy it. The next item, Eastern Charlotte Inc., appreciate you coming, give us a briefing on what's going on. Please keep us updated as things progress and keep us what's going on as, as it progresses. There's been a few items the town has not been dealing with this summer because other things have been going on. The CIO needs direction on how we are going to proceed to receive and acquire funding to, uh, upgrade well number two. Uh, water line extension, which is down by the new well. Any paving we wanna do, time's going on. We can't wait much longer if we're gonna do any of that projects. And the wrapping of the pipe on the lower bridge, that has to be done. Those two projects, the well and that pipe have to be done. So council is gonna have to have a special meeting to give the CIO direction on how we should proceed to get things rolling in these projects, if we're gonna have time to do any of them. But two of them are more important than others right now, for sure. Okay. Anything, Jason, you'd like to add to that?
Certainly with the, with the River, Riverview Avenue.
Yeah.
Piping, uh, it's a very significant project that we should be putting in application fairly soon.
Yeah.
The intake's open and, uh, even we can mix that in with the well to, uh, upgrades as well. I mean, that should, that would probably be under a hundred thousand dollars, but, um, certainly if we can get, uh, you know, uh, you know, sixty-six cents on the dollar, uh, we might as well go, try to go for that.
And, and well, number two is the upgrade. They're talking about a generator and a pipe in the new one and they have to decommission the old well.
Okay.
The, the well is already drilled. It's, it's a matter of just hooking things up and getting things going.
Okay. It's not the same meeting that you had with the, the electricians the other time? No, Jason was working on that one and she's about to.
Yeah, I've been, it takes a couple times to vote, but we were kind of not getting to that. And there's a, in regards to COVID, it's nice to have the freedom, but it's no crime to keep your distance and wear a mask. And, you know, it's here, we have to try to live with it, live around it and hopefully things are gonna progress if we can, the freedom is nice to have. But it'd be awful, you know, I hope we don't regress and go back, you know, but unfortunately, as we're watching things carry on, we're quite fortunate down around this area. Hopefully we can carry on the way things are. That's everything I have.
Nothing to add, actually? Thank you. Nothing to add?
Nothing. Well, I just want to thank the Eastern Charlotte, um, Inc. for coming in today. Um, um, there are a lot of questions that we, we still be having as, as, as we are moving forward. Um, yeah, um, I want to thank you for coming in today and giving us this presentation. I said there, there, there are questions that we wanna have. It, it's, it's almost like an evolving, evolving process as, 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 as your report comes to us and um, we just went through a, a phase of, uh, uh, public hearing where certain concerns were voiced, which I'm sure that, that, that you should be at least aware of them, that people are concerned about essentially that we have, we are already heavily taxed at the, at the local level. So even if we split the thing around, we still have to put our, our, our hand in the pocket. So there are some concerns that I'm looking forward to actually expressing, expressing in the, in the, in the, in the months ahead. Uh, it's not something that's gonna happen tomorrow or the next week, but it's very important to know what the community also raised as a concern in a previous hearing. Um, in terms of good news, I guess we are having, um, um, the, the Summer Fest almost nailed down. So despite the, 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 the dark days of COVID, we, we managed to have like some sort of a sliver of light at the end of the, the summer. So there would be like a, a fairly, fairly, um, fairly interesting, um, a Summer Fest, uh, at the end of, uh, August. And I also, I mentioned it before, uh, for first time, we're gonna try to do something a bit different with our music, uh, events. It's a small risk we take, uh, try to get, uh, for example, the, an Emmy, an Emmy nominated group to come to St. George and, and play classical music. Uh, maybe it's not the hottest ticket in town, but maybe, uh, a lot of people are interested and many other people wanna come from outside the town to attend it. So it's part of a small risk that we have to take as a community and see what it teaches. And that's all for me.
I'll just agree with some of the things that Sam said, that we have to get together as a council and give Jason direction. And you didn't get all the music that I liked. I wanted the batch, right, Gemma? And that's all. First of all, I need to apologize for being late. Work called me away and when I realized what time it was, um, I left my husband to finish up the task, so I'm here and I'm thankful I'm here. Um, I didn't want, I didn't wanna miss the Eastern Charlotte, uh, presentations. I apologize for missing that. But I did read all through the, uh, proposal and I'm definitely interested in, in keeping abreast of where you're going and how it's going moving forward, for sure. Um, and I'm excited that we are able to launch our Summer Fest, you know, and have some fun. If you have some fun.
On that note, um, I'm also obviously very excited for Summer Fest as well. Um, me alongside Barbara and Nancy, we've been helping organize this. Um, I have to stress that we do have limit, we do have a limited budget and we need, we need help ensuring that, that these events can go as smoothly as possible. Um, so if anyone would like to donate a little bit of their time in any capacity, we would more than welcome it, so.
Yes, please.
Please.
Maybe some, some student volunteers.
We've tried.
Well, maybe somebody will tell you.
We're gonna take you up on that.
So, um, uh, the date of our next regular meeting is September thirteenth. And it's gonna be held here. And, uh, I'd like to, need a motion to adjourn.